Views, thoughts and opinions expressed in this podcast are the content creators own and do not represent the views, thoughts and opinions of Essex County College. The material and information presented here is for entertainment and informative purposes only. Should not be considered as professional advice or a substitute for seeking professional guidance.
Hey guys, I'm back. Welcome back to another episode of Loner and if you already know who I am, it's me, John O'Wazoo. I'm still isolated, I'm still alone, I'm still single, but I at this point I shouldn't care. Because I gotta go back, I let's just go back to what I said previously. Have you ever heard of Daniel Tiger? Cause I've because when I was a kid, I was used to, I was, I gotten used to watching PBS. My local station would be W N E T or W N D C if you were to live in the sixties, but let's just call that as W N E T PBS, PBS station in New York. But formerly that would be New Jersey is just where I live. So yeah, Daniel Tiger, apparently that's a, it's been a popular topic over the summer. That I want to discuss about that briefly because I've learned something myself. I don't want to try, I don't really want to be the main character at all because I've realized something. It's not that I want to be important at all, but if it matters to me the most, I've realized something. I'm always going to be jealous, but not to, not at the cost where I'm going to go ahead and do some political violence against. Look, if you've seen the soup, don't shoot the messenger. Uh, my boy or actually I don't want some cringe, but yuck. Actually made made a short discussion, basically a controversial topic where I said something about. How political violence was never, was never the answer to begin with, but I also said that you're an asshole. Any other reason why I said that was because we're all entitled to opinions, but at the end of the day. If you're just gonna kill somebody, then you're, it just makes you a bad person. And that's alternatively, that's what I would have said. But I think if you, if you want to watch and if actually not watch, but if you want to listen to more of me, more of me and more of his messages. I can tell you right now, he's mostly emotionally intelligent than I am. But again, as I said already, I'm not trying, I'm not going to be violent against my brother itself. Because that's just another thing, he can go on and just harass me however he wants to, but at the end of the day, I have my, I have my own business. Not like stay in your lane where you can try to be motivational and you interviewed somebody like. How like I said, y'all just interviewed me for this, for this session. And as of this week, at least I'm recording this, I'm recording this episode within the same session where the meeting has happened. And so as a new episode of Don't Shoot the Messenger and now I'm here as of September 17th, recording another episode. But you won't be seeing that until October 1st. And once that gets real and once that episode gets released, you're gonna see a new segment called Ross critiques where I critique some, where I critique something from the media. And maybe you should just go ahead and check that out on go, on the ghost city channel. Where I've made up a little episode on Tory and Smith party. And I criticized and just gave him some feedback on what he could, on what he could have done better. And just a bit of an update, he have actually has sort of improved, even though he barely has any time, it's like he barely has any material to work left. That he's now just doing the podcast itself. You know, listen out loud and that's a podcast from almost a decade ago. Back when the loudest was revelant. And that's another thing I want to talk about now. For some reason, T-Nik decided to air all the summer arc, there was, I think it was the summer vacation thing, whatever it was. For some reason, T-Nik decided to air all of those episodes without anybody noticing that. And I guess that's the reason why my YouTube channel failed because I failed to market my own content, I failed to go on and just say, oh, actually I did. I actually did briefly marketing my own YouTube channel, but it just turns out nobody ended up watching it. Like how I ended up making a new video about the kids choice awards. I made, I actually was just making fun out of them and just saying that they're all jokes. And then, you know, there was this one part where I said Trump isn't gonna do at all. And that's only because there was this one comment where they said something about how Trump is, how about Trump? About how don't Trump should be, should um, do a presidential order or something like that, it was something like. I don't remember the tweet itself, but it said something about how they shouldn't allow SpongeBob to win and on every case choice awards for favorite animation show because. We all get it that SpongeBob keeps winning and we all get frustrated about it, but. If you already seen the video, if, or if you did not, I'm not going to play a clip out of it because right now I'm have to record this within, within one take. So if you have, so if I'm socially awkward here, then I'm going to be socially awkward. Because at the end of the day, I'm not going to be a fake person where I'm going to be mostly energetic. But then, once you see me on campus, you'll just see me, you'll just see me depressed or at least isolated or anxious. So that's the first of the loner itself. I'm not trying to lose the message at all because even though it's turned into something more commentary. I've also learned something about. And now I'm just realizing I'm just having some two topics between Daniel Tiger and Daniel Tiger's neighborhood and then there's also the. Between the loudest thing, but I'm gonna go back to Daniel Tiger. Because at the end of the day, I'm not going to be angry at all. Because at the end of the day, as I said already, I'm gonna be jealous, most of the time I would be jealous, but it's not gonna come at the cost of my well being. Because at the end of the day, we all know your well being matters, you're not alone, but what if I am alone? What if I, uh, what if I am alone where nobody, where I just ask myself? What can one person do when nobody's there for you? And there's one, and there's just one thing that I've learned out of Mr. Smith from animation class and new media technology, well, basically from new media classes at least. If you fall down, get up. Because when it comes to the rise and fall, sometimes you'll have, you'll peek into something more, you'll, you'll pick in popularity. Like a popular, like a popular kid or a popular boy, however you would want to refer it as. One day you'll be popular and then the other, and then the other semester you just won't, you'll be overshadowed. For some reason, I have some accent there, but you'll just be overshadowed by another person, by another individual. So at the end of the day, just be you because even though Jerry has his own show called just be you. I'm just gonna say the same thing to you. And that's the, at the end of the day, I've actually met two guys and they're all black. Not to say that I'm racist or anything, but I think they're cool. Maybe I'll try to be friends with them and if you don't want to be my, if you don't want to be a friend, well, then that's fine because at the end of the day, I'm going to be alone, I'm going to be single. It's also the reason why I'm not, I don't tend to have a girlfriend at all. And yeah, don't really expect the Valentine's Day as special for me, I'm sorry, but it's not, it's not. It's mostly because I don't want to talk about some sappy love crap. And I don't experience love at all, you know, this one song called where's the love? Maybe you may have heard that, maybe you didn't, but it is what it really is. So when it just comes to emotional intelligence, it just means to be emotional, like you can say, you can express your feelings. But I'm not going to go ahead and rage and say, oh, I'm mad, I am jealous. Let me go ahead and be stupid around them. And then they just sing a lesson even though, and then there's this one clip that were also about manipulation when it comes to opinions. About the egg sandwich, about how Mr. Lena never, didn't really like the egg sandwich, then you got offended by it and then you, and then you just said something about, how do you feel? I mean, how would you feel if you know somebody's didn't like what she said or however you said it? We all got angry about that, it was just all rage beat. And then, you know, miss, and then since your hurry came in. I think you may have seen the episode because that's obviously hyped. There's some controversies, not controversies, but there are some theories revolve him, but I'm not, but I'm not going to be the one who's gonna talk about it because I'm the wrong person. But all I can see is this, like even though I may be socially awkward, I may be, may not be the best person in or to message these morals. At least I'm self-aware. Even though I have a bit of self doubt, if you remember the first episode, I just have to get up. And when I do get up, I at least I'll have to, at least what I can do is build a community. Which I mean unable to do so right now, but. Even though, as I said, even though I don't have a problem with a bunch of African Americans, a bunch of black people, Jamaicans, even my best friend Royale was also black. Or even though he would just be American Jamaican, Jamaican, American, however, however he would prefer it as. So again, we're all separate, we have, we all have our separate goals, we all have our separate opinions. So at the end of the day, I'm gonna say this, if you have an opinion, then that's fine. But as I said, don't get offended if nobody agrees, if nobody agrees with you. And even he talked about the Drake versus Kendrick Lamar thing. I'm not trying to copy off, I'm not trying to copy up what Yuck said, but I just want to provide some additional insight today that didn't got, that that it got into his show. Or at least didn't meet, didn't got in into his own show because you know. But as I said already, he's mostly emotionally, emotionally intelligent, he's more intelligent than I am, I'm impressed by his own show. So again, if you want to listen to him, then go check out Don't Shoot the Messenger, but I'm not gonna go ahead and make this whole show as a whole commercial for him. Because he has his own audience, I have my own, my own audience. But I think that should be, that should be it for the entire itself and now let's talk about the loudest and SpongeBob. So as I said already, with a lot of course, I don't really get why T-Nik would decide to go on and just, actually, I'm not really surprised at all, I would not be surprised because Nick loading just does this every time. You can take a long hiatus and then the next day, nobody's, nobody will know that they're gonna release new episodes. And yet the fandom is completely small that anybody would, you can just see a bunch of leaks and some images. That includes some spoilers, spoilers. And you may have not heard of those, and you may have not heard of those screenshots, actually not me have heard. Let me go ahead and re-clarify that. If you haven't seen the episode that sets up only because they failed to market. They failed to market that episode, set of episodes and decided to go ahead and rush production out of it. That's only, that's another reason why I don't tend to watch that show anymore and even though we have cell park now, since it's still there. They're now, we, uh, they're now a bi-weekly show instead of the usual weekly Wednesday's thing. And now they're pairing up with Beavis and Butthead. And I also tend to watch that show when I was, when I was a kid as well with my brother. Even even though I don't watch the reboot itself, I'm still going to remember cell park because it's still a famous show, it's still iconic to Comedy Central and yet I'm TVS to a relevant. But uh, that's all I can say, so last minute episode itself, if you're just going to promote, if you're gonna promote a new episode, then please let us know. If you, if you, if you don't let us know at all, then I don't really, then I would ignore you. And I'm just going to go ahead and move on to my own life and just do what I, do what I gotta do. And now let's talk about SpongeBob itself because when it comes to the timeline itself. I just realized how they just ruined the original title line with the Patrick Star Show or at least the Star Family. Summary, for some reason, they decided to make that episode for nostalgia bait. And we ended up just seeing how the Star Family decided to ruin the original episodes and even then they were also be recorded. I don't really get the reason why they, why would they decide to re-record the episodes at all? The original recording itself sounded way better because it's just stock footage, well, not stock footage, but stock audio from past recordings, which in that case would be stored on tape. If you remember cell park, I've also, you may have seen episode one and then when you seen cancelled season seven. They reuse the audio from that first, from the first episode and then the return chef, I think. From season 10, I think, see, I believe it's season 10. They also did reuse some audio from season one itself, which means don't be afraid of reusing the ori, don't be afraid of reusing old audio, but don't go ahead and use that. To, you know, just to not extend the budget, but to go ahead and limit your budget. Sometimes it's a, it's a better idea, uh, if, if your re-recording doesn't sound good, just go ahead and use a stock, just use a stock footage. Or at least use the original, the original recording itself. But that's probably all I can say to that, it just feels like, it just feels like fan service gone wrong. And I've, I think this will probably be forgettable at all, at all, even even they went back to their first episode. SpongeBob just didn't sound the same at all because Tom Kenny is getting old. And even though I'm just 19, I can notice the difference, they, I mean, there were a bunch of missed opportunities with that special and even though I've never watched that since I no longer have cable. I thought they could have done better over the time, I thought they could have done better. And it's with 60 minutes, I just think it's, it's a waste of time. I don't really see a reason why they would, why they would think it was a good idea to make that episode. Only to see the Star Family ruin the whole thing and now we, I would say it's not really the best special that that they came up with. So that's one thing I would probably say to that. And even El Chavo, I for, I would, and back in my childhood, I used to, I used to go to Telefatura, which will, which is what my uncle references to Unimas. And I've realized that there was a long history with channel 68 in Newark, in Newark. There were once, they were once independents, an independent television station in Newark. And now they're affiliated with, with Spanish, well, now they're just affiliated with a Spanish sub network, a sub channel. From Univision or if you know me, Univision, because that's how we usually say it in Spanish. Most people who were, who would refer that would, would call them Univision, even though that's not how, how, what's called. That's just not how you pronounce the original name itself or in that case affiliated with the Spanish international network, that, that was a former name. But I've also realized at the end of the day, even their channel was completely boring before El Chavo got syndicated. So if you were only just watching Del Nivelas. I would be the only one who wouldn't, who wouldn't get into it because even though I may be Hispanic, I don't go ahead and watch some soap operas or some telling guys coming from Televisa. Televisa is from Mexico and they've ruined it. Them, they themselves decided to ruin the original remasters and that was like a decade ago. Mostly because of copyright, of the copyright issues that I will not be playing here because I will also suffer from copyright. Because then this college, this campus will suffer from a copyright strike because I illegally use the Beethoven inspired theme. With using a moog synthesizer. Even if, but for some reason, we don't have a problem with that with El Chaplin Colorado, but that's for another time that I'll talk about. Then so again, they decided to go ahead and ruin the whole music where at this point you might as well just go ahead and watch El Chapo animado. Or the animated version of El Chavo, because even though we may like the first three seasons, even they also fell off as well. Because when they, when they did original stories, it just, it wasn't the same anymore, it just felt like something else. And that's what I don't want to do with my, with my own pockets as well, because even though I'm gonna be doing some remaster, even, even though they have their own remasters just for new audience. It just doesn't have that same feeling that any, that an old, that the older generation has felt before. So when it comes to broadcast indication, I just realized it makes, it makes money. But there's a time and place where if you ruin broadcast indication, then I just think you will be better off just watching the original cuts. Onto streaming services and even, and when it's not streaming services, it's private, it's piracy. Because we, sometimes we also tend to watch your, some old. Sometimes we also watch them episodes for free and that was before the visa just, you know, decided to copyright them. Even though they came, even though those reruns read their firmless estrellas, which in that case would be the X A, the level. I can't even pronounce it for some reason. Equis de la, de la, that. You can just cut that out, but. I get, you think that I, I'm a gringo for some reason, X E W channel two or canal dos. They have their own story with Telec Sama Mexicano and now, and Chavo came from channel eight, which was, which was from, wasn't from Telecia Sama Mexicano. Canal ocho was, was not, is now known as Canal nueve or at least nine. So channel eight is basically El Chavo and Los Polivoses. They have their own, they have their own history as well, even if you live in Ecuador. They also sent the air La Tremenda Corte or Teres Patines. That I've also seen, I've also seen a bit of that before, but of course that's based on, on all videotape, probably from a humatic tape. It still looks, it still looks damaged as before that they didn't even bother remastering it. And some other obscure comedies that I would probably, I would rather watch than some telling novellas or some, something more dramatic. But that's just only me, so at the end of the day, if you're gonna go ahead and remaster it, then at least try to not to go ahead and re-event and just replace some music with some stock music that doesn't fit. Or have that same feeling like it, it was pretty, like it was previously originally made. Or if that case, if you're into Brazil. You could say they technically done a better job, but when it came to the remasters, they've also used the, the dub. The televisa dub then, as I said, just doesn't fit at all and even that suffers from El Chaplin Colorado. Which would be the, the right, the grass, a grasshopper superhero who's just clumsy. So the remaster itself, I just don't really like it, that I would just rather watch the original version of the episode. And even though that may be lost media, we, at least we remember what we, we do remember. And if we don't have any audit and we don't have any tips of it, then we, maybe one day I'll talk about lost media. And that'll be an episode I'll talk about, I'll talk more about in a future episode for Halloween. Let's just talk about my own traditions and, and a little bit of lost media. That will be an upcoming episode for Halloween, so stay tuned for that. And um, yeah, I originally was gonna make a whole hour long episode, but I just think it's probably just time for me to go ahead and start something small, so it's just gonna be another like 30 minute episode. And so I just realized when it comes to filler, that's another thing, filler is, is already a bad thing because when, when you're just talking redundantly, you're just speaking over and over again, it's like, you're just. Expressing the same pains, but you just don't have any, you just don't have execution. So about the execution, you're just gonna go ahead and just briefly do one, this topic once again, then. You probably won't even like that topic at all that you might as well just scrap it. So that's what I tend not, that's what I want to do as well, just want to go ahead and change on things. Because I realized when it comes to my own unscripted shows, I just feel, it feels more awkward, it just feels more awkward to where. I were probably, I would be better off making a lot of edits on my, to my shows, but since this is a live show. I would just let Mr. Roger or someone else to go ahead and to go out and edit the rest of my, to go on and edit some controversies, just edit some things that. We'll probably make it semi-professional, even though, even, even though campus is like community college itself isn't really professional. But then again, we're not really making Hollywood, even though we originally made movies in New Jersey before California came in and overtook that. So that's all I can really say for that, you know, in the meantime. I've been joining some, I have been joining some new clubs, I have been joining some old new clubs. If you remember already, I told you I was not, I was not gonna appear in the film club anymore. That's only because I'm still frustrated from that, I'm still jealous out of them, but it is what it really is and me Angelique, she already left, so there's no point for me to go, to go back with them. It's a, like I said with him, he, let him just be. Because even though I was convinced to do my YouTube channel, it failed itself. Because here's the thing. When I originally did YouTube, I used to tend, I tend to do some go anime videos like grounded videos and even then they were just hor, they were just horrible, meaningless. I don't even know what was I thinking when I made these videos before with Jahad. And this was, it was basically random kids gets grounded. It's just, it's just something stupid and then, you know, they do something stupid and they get grounded by their parents. For some reason, tho, those episodes that I did back then were just completely stupid. Even my, even it was through his HD, I think that was the most like. The content that I do now doesn't reflect what I did in the past. So to my old self, all I'm, like all I can say to myself was what was I thinking when I did that? And when it came to I ready to get speed up, I have, I have only made like two episodes or so or at least one. Actually, no, I just remembered it was just two episodes, I made an I ready right about that, but those are all lost media. Or I just don't really want to talk about them because of how stupid they were. Basically, it was like every time something stupid happens, I was gonna speed up by a semi tone or something. I had no idea what was I thinking, that was only because I hated I ready, but now that I know, no longer use that, I don't have, don't really have a reason why I should be talking about that. I made a bunch of episodes about that, but then that started video editing, that just started the early beginnings of video editing. Before I took video editing series onto DaVinci. And now DaVinci is saving my life, but most of the tutorials that I'm watching right now just involves something Adobe. So when it comes to Adobe Creative Cloud, I actually, I'm able to afford it because I'm, I'm in community college. So when it comes to community college, I can afford. Most, most things that were, that were previously expensive, I can afford them, that's the only reason why I said, that's the only reason why I'm saying that the budget has increased. Only because I have the perks of some discounts on college discounts. And they gave me the benefit because anything that I would, because if I'd never went to college, I probably wouldn't afford my own, my first camera, the Sony Z V ten. And since the iPhone seventeen came out, I can also use that to go, to go on, to go on and make some movies and maybe just, and maybe just add something, maybe just add some phone lens as well. Not just the inbuilt camera lens that's already in there, I can just buy some lens, I can buy a tripod for it. But I won't replace the Sony Z V ten because I also have to learn how to use a camera. Since they have Panasonic's and even though we also have cannons, Lumix. Again, the film club uses a, uses a bit of Panasonic's. I've once seen the mute. I, one time they've used the black magic one that was in 6K. I thought the quality was, the quality itself was impressive. Way better than the Lumix G seven. And for me to, for me to buy a CB ten, it was just an okay camera, at the end of the day, it's an okay camera. For beginners, but I probably would have spent some, but if I spend more, I could get a better quality camera. But at the end of the day, they're all gonna say, oh, you can serve a phone, like even though you now have a YouTube channel, you can just always start off with a camera. And that's how I still originally started Ross critiques and, or at least my, my early structure of Central High School. Because um, there was um, I think if I, if I recall, there was, there was some news. Some morning announcements where I was, where I was gonna talk about some of that, I actually don't even remember, but that was like back in 2020 during virtual, virtual classes back on Webex. I only did one video and I thought I would, I could have done better. So at the end of the day, I, you know, once I'm out of here, I have to go out and edit the two boys because we're currently gonna, because currently we're gonna do a horror movie. That's gonna last for like more than a minute long, but not too, not too long. I'm currently busy at the moment being, so by the time you're, you're watching this, by the time you're listening to this right now, the video might, might have already been done. But I'm still going to be busy regardless and so that's why I'm gonna pre-record this episode and then later on. I'm going to ask Mr. Roger to delay that episode until October 1st because I'm going to have it, because I'm going to have a video segment afterwards, after this, after this part. So stay tuned for a couple of minutes because I'm going to introduce you to Ross critiques. And as I said already, this week's, this week's topic is going to be more about morning announcements, so this episode itself is gonna be relevant here. So there you are, so the classes that I'm now taking are currently phone making classes, I'm screenwriting and then there's also animation, which at the end of the day, and I realized. When I originally intended to be an animator, now I'm, now I'm just remembering how hard it is to animate, uh, stop motion. And 2D and 3D and even though we're now using Adobe animate for 2D animations, we're also using our phones to do some stop motion. I can give you a whole portfolio of it, but maybe in 2027, I'll go and I'll give you the whole, the complete, I'll just send in the complete collection to LinkedIn. Or at least to anybody that I can, that I will trust in. So you have that, so afterwards, maybe I'm learning something that maybe animation may not be the best, may not be the best job I'll pursue it. Nor, nor doing art, which is another reason why I decided to move on to music. And if you've seen Life is Hip Hop, most of it afterwards was mostly about music. So hopefully you'll, you've understood what I've said previously with Ecuador, at least my experiences of Ecuador, some Palacios, some San Juanito, some Colombia. I have a lot to talk about there and that's, that's another thing I want to talk about. Because apparently I've, I've been aware, it's been, apparently it's, it's gone to my well. It's some attention that's taken, so I've gotten my attention that these, this gave me a poster. Basically, the film club decided to go ahead, to go on and do a film festival this December. So originally that was gonna, originally the story of X twenty four was gonna air on November. But since I'm gonna be making my own documentary, I decided maybe why not delete it until either this. If I cement this to the film festival and they, they let me in. Then that'll be the day where you, where you guys can see my documentary about Ecuador and my own experiences as a music producer, at least as a beat maker. So I hope you guys, you know, hopefully if you do see me on, on the film festival, you know. Just want, I just want your insights, I just want to see if you can relate to what I'm talking, if you can relate to me. If not, then that's okay. But this is my own story, so if I talk about Ecuador, if it's not really, it's not really about you. This is more about Ecuadorians and I thought it would have been more appropriate to air this episode on Hispanic character today. Unfortunately, I wouldn't, I fortunately, because I'm recording this as of now and I have some other things to do as well. I don't think this episode will, will make it into the, into that day because I'll still, I still have a bunch of, I still have a bunch of shots to edit, some camera shots, some documentaries. Some stock footage, some stock images, so. I have a lot going on with my documentary, so that's the only reason why I decided to delay that until November. That's what's been going on because I really haven't focused on that project yet, but I did recorded the introduction and conclusion part. Which I'm going to be editing soon, which may be around the weekend. So in the meantime, all I'm gonna say is this, I'm sorry that I, that I lied to you because originally I was gonna, I was gonna end this year, I was gonna end this season with documentary. Turns out I did nothing. Because I'm, I was still writing script and now I, fortunately for me, I, I finished the script. But now I have to go on and record my lines for it as an, as narration and then do a couple of camera shots. So I still have, so none of this will include any scripts or storyboarding. The script itself will look like an essay, but there won't be any storyboards because I'm going to improvise that. So yeah, I'm sorry if you think I'm gonna storyboard that because I'm, you know, it's my vision. And I'm sorry if I go, if I decide to skip that step, it really is what it is, but that's also going to affect production of my show because. Once I do, once I, once I'm finished, I'm most, I would most likely gets, I would most likely be stressed. From production workflows and from assignments, but even though the assignment should be less, should be a lot, my homework should be a higher priority than my own podcast. But I'm only here just because I want to express my own opinions and now that I'm here, back with another season and hopefully you guys haven't, have any like. Hopefully you'll give me, you'll guys give me something to talk, to talk about. So remember, I just wanted to comment down below and so on suggest, I just want you guys, your suggestions, your feedback on my show. Because I want, as I said, I want to enhance my show and not to go back into score, square A or at least back to the beginning. But I remember I still, I'm still going to answer my question in the season, but now at least hopefully you'll remember what my question was. If not, I'll talk about that later, I will talk about that in a, in a future episode. So yeah, I guess they decided to go, they decided to ghost me and now I'm just gonna ghost the film club back, so it's not in your face. But I'm gonna, I'm just gonna go back, I'm just going to go back to home, I'm gonna go back home, edit some things. And just finish my own projects for a W premiere pro, I'll experience, I will experiment that later on. But for now, we'll go on and stick with the eventual resolve and finish my EP called the story of actually, not the story of it. My EP for X J twenty four, which is still me. Alright, I gotta go to the bathroom, but in the meantime, that's going to be about it for me and that's gonna be about it for podcast club here, so from all of us here, thank you guys for listening and. Now, without further ado. Now, without further ado, let's get on with, with, let's get on with our final scene here with Ross critiques. But until then, this is me, Jara Wazo. Thank you, thank you, thank you once again for coming to this special meeting. And even though this podcast may not, may not last long, just remember, I want to give you some original ideas, but I can't do it alone. I just can't do it alone without feedback. So if you have any ideas, if you have any suggestions that I should talk about next, again, comment down below. If you wanna talk, if you wanna talk to me, then you know. Go on, just speak to me on campus or follow me on X, the R twenty-four on Instagram. And remember, just remember, don't be, ju- just remember. So don't become the, just don't be the main character at all. If you're not the center of it, if you're not the center of it, if you're not the center of attention, then that's okay. Because just be, because if you become yourself. You won't be, you just won't, and even though you may not be popular, at least you mo- you know yourself better than your own friends. So maybe it's better off that I'm, it's better off to say I'm gonna be isolated, but it's okay to be isolated and single. Alright, I'm gonna go to the bathroom and I'm about to go, and then afterwards, I'm gonna go home. And continue to edit with the two boys, and then afterwards, I will go on and edit my own podcast, well, my own podcast, no, my own documentary very soon. So again. Here's the thing, as long as I said, one more goal. If the film does, if the documentary, The Story of XJ twenty-four, does not make it, does not make it into the roster. I'll release that, I will be releasing this documentary as a Christmas special, or at least the following week after the film festival. So. Let's hope, let's hope that. If it, if it makes it to the film festival, you, you guys get to see it first, before I release it, before I release it, either for season three or at least the season two finale. But if it does not make it into, into the festival, then I'll release it, then I will release the documentary the following week after the film festival. Just so, just so you guys can see what you missed on it, or at least what they missed on. So it's mostly, it's going to be a competition. Alright, I think I've spoke for so long, it's already thirty-two minutes, but I think I'm out. So without further ado. Here's our, here's the last, here's our last segment of the day. And I'm going to end the show with Ross critiques. Once again, this is me, Jara Wazo. Thank you guys again for listening, and I will catch you guys again next week. Now, let's get on, let's get on with our, with our first video of, of the season. Good morning, good evening, and welcome back to Ross critiques. The show is going to continue to offer some feedback and some critiques. But you know, for a culture audience. So you may be wondering why I'm foaming here instead of my bedroom. Let's just say my parents doesn't really care and. This is probably the time where I would be honest, I'm gonna be honest with you. It's already twelve sixteen in the morning, I need to get my own room. It's already getting harder for me to start foaming and editing videos alone. But I don't regret, you know, leaving the film club, and I'll make a discussion about it next week. For now, let's go on and, you know, talk about today's question. Have you ever gone on light and thought about how your morning announcements felt like dull and unengaging? If you ever went through all of that, that's what we're gonna do today. We're going to examine how a school newscast can, let's just say, be misleading. Between publicity and journalism, but to be more specific, what you should not do in a high school newscast.
Television production and cinematography. Two terms are focuses on video production. With one focusing on post-production and the other one emphasizing live broadcasting. Often, you see some pre-recorded content producing house with items that the average student cannot afford.
However, if you save over four thousand dollars, you can probably buy professional camcorder from Sony, Panasonic, JVC, but. Preferably if you're a new media technology student, you already have camcorders like this one, a Panasonic JVC cam.
And even then, not everyone shapes a concept of morning announcements or morning news properly, when there overload of advertisements and lackluster storytelling. At ECC, students and faculty obtain information such as the student's first daily blast, which publishes details from the Student Government Association. Club participation, or any special events offered by the Student Life and Activities Office. You can view them online or on campus. One of the best examples comes from Ocean City High School, end their show, Colonel C. The program features well-edited, written and produced shows for the school year that resemble newscasts from a local CBS or ABC station. That's unless if we're not talking about Sinclair or Next Star. Aside from that, it's news, sports and weather. You have everything that you want the news to do, but not a whole thirty-minute show. Here's what happens when you decide to cheap out everything else and you start out without a budget or any experience. San Gorgonigo High School in San Bernardino, California presents a flawed sample with too many school laps within a single minute. Including poorly timed intros, video ingestor transitions, and outros that work better for a basic TikTok or Instagram video. While they upgraded to a lavender mic, it doesn't improve the performances, given that a small girly mini mic that says with an AirPod doesn't work. Nor the draw-on-screen graphics. This year, they attempted to include trivia time segments. Still, the execution was lost in the process. As it accomplished barely any interaction before moving on to more ads, as if nothing ever happened. Now I want to show you what you should not do, even as a girls-only newscast. Bloopers will like showing intimacy and public humiliation in front of your colleagues. One of the worst offenders is a video dated August nineteen twenty-five, which appears to work better on some girls' Instagram or social private accounts. The way they're dressed, wear jeans and open tuxedos or flip locks do not work, and that's only because we're liking creativity in outfits. Or even this scene where you already know, nobody asked.
Oh, Sofia doesn't have shoes on.
Perverts. So, what's the difference here? You have students in South Jersey who took the time to write and organize news packages and institute a segment, making student engagement efficient. In California, nobody knows what they're doing. So here are my recommendations to start a newscast, and the same principles apply to any podcast. Ensure that you include student participation. You need to find ways to make your newscast fun, but at the same time, not be exploitive, or just tell them, hey, attention this, attention that students. It's not really going to be productive if you're just gonna tell announcements and not stories. In other words, I'm just trying to say this. If you wanna engage students in your show, help them learn something new about students and faculty without appearing like a full-blown TikTok video. And that's another thing. Encourage them to tune in daily, which means depending on their school's dress code. Your attire or your own clothing should not lean towards something more suggestive or sexual attraction towards women. Otherwise, it would just be inappropriate. If you're going to film and edit videos for your school, consider purchasing a laptop with sixteen gigabytes or thirty-two gigabytes of RAM. And ask a local musician to create original music instead of using copyrighted music illegally. That's unless if you wanna get copyright strike by YouTube. You can use camcorder slides to go, but use them wisely and modify them to make your studio unique and original. Rather than relying solely on stock images or poorly edited backgrounds. That also means if you're going to do a green screen backdrop, just don't, please do not overuse any backgrounds you see from a Tricaster. Just be original and make your own set. While you're at it, buy as many sources as possible to utilize a three-point lighting setup. And consider purchasing a boom mic such as the Sandoval MKE six hundred, along with an audio mixer. And to simplify portable videography, consider the newer iPhone models paired with an external lens and a tripod for a more professional look. This last tip is optional. Remove the pleasure of allegiance, as it wastes some time at the beginning of your show, when you could be previewing your daily stories or current events. Now, this would be the part where I would say who does that, but it would just be inappropriate, because sometimes we do need that to respect the countries, even though we all do some stupid things here in America. And I'm not proud of it.
So at the end of the day, professionalism shouldn't be exploited profit, as it requires some skill, coordinated efforts and creativity. Regardless of how much money you'd spend and, you know, torture students. And in that case, I'm filming this episode without a budget, so it is what it really is. So if you don't have a story to tell, just don't make a newscast and just stick back to social media. That's it for today's critique. I might as well get out right now before I get accused of inappropriate remarks about women and then. Tell me that this episode doesn't belong under the college's guidelines and then get banned from like all the forty clubs. Because the segment itself is controversial for them.
This has been a production of the Essex County College Podcast Club. Copyright twenty twenty-four, all rights reserved.